There we are recording, thank you.
Welcome everyone. My name is Mike Peterson, Mayor of City Cotwood Heights. It's Tuesday, October 20th. It's 7:07. Sorry, we're a couple of minutes late, but transitioning from meeting to meeting. I'd like to begin with reading a determination that is required because we do not have an anchor location where people can come and be present. And for those who have heard this for the third time today, I apologize. It states pursuant to Utah Code annotated 52-4-2074, the city's mayor as the Chair of the City Council hereby determines that conducting the meeting of the City Council on this date at an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location. It is well recognized that a global pandemic currently exists related to the COVID-19 coronavirus, which has the potential to overwhelm Utah's healthcare system. Therefore, due to the state of emergency caused by the global pandemic, define that conducting a meeting at an anchor location under the current state of public health emergency constitutes a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the location. For we are on Zoom once again. With that being said, we now ask for a pledge of allegiance. And I want to ask Councilor Michael, would you please lead us in that pledge?
All right, two weeks in a row.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know you did it last week.
That's okay. Everybody stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
States of America and to the Republic where it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry about that, Councilor Michael. I did not know you did it last week.
That's okay.
Now you won't have to worry about it for a couple of months. All right, citizen comments. Before we turn it over to citizen comments, I just ask our audience who is going to make public comment, encourage you to please state your name. And if you're resident of Cottonwood Heights, we'd appreciate knowing if you're one of our constituents. But also, we encourage that our comments be civil, no personal attacks. We don't think that's appropriate. But we respect everybody's right to give their thoughts and opinion. With that being said, we have allowed three minutes per individual. Unless you represent an organized group, then we've allowed up to five minutes. Our city manager, Tim Teen, will be holding up a little card that shows the time when it's it's appropriate. So I don't mean to cut anybody off. Sometimes I have to encourage people to come to an end of the comments. Okay, Paula, you want to introduce our first public comment person?
Yes, sir. It's Tim Halbeck.
Welcome, Tim.
Mr. Mayor, welcome back. You guys hear me okay?
Yep, I'm not any older.
Uh, this will be nice and quick. I just want to say welcome back. And I want to start by putting a vicious rumor to rest. Councilman Bracken did not make a motion to make himself dictator and ruler of all the lands last week while you were gone. But I have it on good authority. He did sit in your chair and spin in circles for a few minutes. So just so you know. Uh, let's see. Uh, I'm just going to skip straight to the old jokes. That's all good. I'm not saying the mayor is old. But he was when he was young, rainbows were still black and white. You know, his, his very first phone number was two. Well, because we all know who got number one. He's still old. He invented ICE. There you go. That's all I got is a short one this week.
All right. Well, thank you for a little levity. I, I am getting older. Just ask my wife and my 15 grandkids. All right. Thanks, Tim. Paula, who's next?
Patricia Dennis.
Welcome, Patricia.
Uh, good evening. I was reading different blogs and they put out a plea for people to come and make comments to support our police department. And I see Robbie's online here. I, I wouldn't wish this on anybody. But 11 years ago, when our son committed suicide and Robbie showed up to our house, the training and compassion and knowledge that he demonstrated in times of craziness and distress couldn't have been more perfect. He slammed his hand down on the table and said, I was just parenting because I'd taken the kids gaming away. He wasn't doing his homework. And when people are, you know, raising alarms about the police officers and not doing their jobs or not doing this, you know, there's, there's important things and there's things that need to get done. And then there's things like this that had it not been for what he did that night. I don't know if I could have slept for weeks, months, years. So I wanted to come on and put that out there. It's been a long time, but nevertheless meant a tremendous amount to myself and my husband. And you know, people say, you know, when they learn about it, my response is, would you rather be the parent of a Virginia Tech kid who takes the lives of many innocents? Or would you rather be the parent of a kid who commits suicide because he's too troubled to survive in this world? So I'm just putting that out there, you know, what's important. Thanks for letting me share.
Patricia, thank you for your comments. That's very meaningful and important that you share that with others. And thank you for sharing it with us. Paula, who's next?
I have Julie Vandertoon.
Julie, welcome.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Mike Peterson, I know you from years ago at Cottonwood Heights Rec Center. Thank you for being an amazing boss. And thank you for doing an amazing job as mayor. Um, I am commenting tonight in support of our amazing police force. I have a few instances I want to share. Number one was several years ago. My oldest was driving my two youngest to school for me while I was at work. The two youngest started screaming because of a flying bug in the car. My oldest turned around to try and figure out what was going on and in the process took out one of our fire hydrants. And my husband and I both got a call from our police force who were so overly kind and caring and assured us that nobody was injured, that she was okay, that all of our kids were okay. And when we got to the accident scene, they once again assured us one of the officers had my oldest in his arms as she was sobbing hysterically. And I just want to thank our officers for being amazing compassionate people. Are they perfect? No, but neither am I. I have many proud parenting moments that I'm not so proud of. And the second instance was a couple of weeks ago. One of my neighbors who suffers from early onset dementia was involved in an accident. I came upon the scene and saw him and could tell that he was quite distressed. So I pulled over and walked over to him and the officer said, do you know this gentleman? I said, yes, he lives down the street from me. They said he's, we don't think he's quite all there. I said, he's probably not. Um, number one, early onset dementia, but then also due to the shock. And these officers were so kind and so caring, made sure he was taken care of, made sure he was safe. The third instance is one of my dearest friends, her husband committed suicide last year. And the care of the officers and the detectives went above and beyond. And I can't imagine what these men and women go through on a daily basis, what they're put through, the situations that they're forced to handle. So thank you to all of them. Anything we can do, you have our support. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Appreciate your comments. Paula, next.
John Fulmer.
Welcome, John.
Welcome. Hello. And thank you for letting me just share a quick comment. I too wanted to just comment briefly that I am very appreciative of the Cottonwood Heights Police Department. I am, I live on Cavalier Drive and I'm a citizen, citizen of Cottonwood Heights. I know a few of the officers personally, and I am very grateful for what they do. I think they do an exceptional job, and I just wanted to pass that along.
Thank you, John. We appreciate you sharing your thoughts. Paula, who's next?
Matthew Fuller.
Matthew, welcome.
Oh, I'd like to also, Sam, very proud of our police very much. Very proud. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Paula, next.
I have Ann Siegler.
Hi, Ann, welcome. Can you hear us, Ann? You're muted. You're muted.
There we go.
There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, welcome, Ann. Good to hear from you.
Thank you. Appreciate all you people do there in the council. It's, it's a big job. But I just wanted to comment that I've been a 30-year resident of Cottonwood Heights, and I appreciate all the city has done to keep Cottonwood Heights, one of Utah's most desirable places to live. While I'm no expert on police reform, I would like to add to some of the police reforms that have been suggested that I have received online. COVID-19 has made difficult situations for so many, both financially and mentally, as that they are becoming desperate and maybe taking abnormal actions. Their situation can result in more stress and anxiety for their family members, but also for our police force. I would recommend hiring of a psychiatrist or a psychologist to not only train our police force to understand the potential actions of these people and the best way to deal with them, but also to possibly go with them on follow-up calls. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Appreciate that suggestion. Paula, who's next?
Um, Ainsley Mench.
Ainsley?
Hello.
Go ahead.
My name is Ainsley Mench. My family has lived in Cottonwood Heights for decades. My grandparents and my mom have raised families here, own small businesses here, taught here, and literally built houses here. So I am a very proud member of this community. And today I'm here to call for the defunding of the police department. I am not proud of our police department. I am terrified of it. When we call for defunding of the police department, it's often seen as a scary term. But what it simply means is divesting from the police budget into other more effective methods of providing crime. Our police, $6 million for a tiny, relatively crime-free suburb. Even with all of the money spent on trainings and supply upgrades, the police continue to brutalize our community. This is not a police reform issue. And I'd like to reiterate some points from last time that I spoke that Cottonwood Heights Police have an enormous amount of training. The officer who killed Zane James even led some of those trainings, which is proof that de-escalation training or other police reform, while good, doesn't solve the problem. This is an issue of investing in fear and violence to control a community rather than pursuing options that benefit the community, like hiring social workers, addiction counselors, or funding after-school programs or daycares, which stops crimes before it happens and has better outcomes for all parties involved and sure costs less than $6 million. I have seen throughout the past year, the past two years, that the police department continues to use violence instead of methods that might de-escalate crime or prevent crime in order to control our community. And by funding our police, by continuing to fund the police department, we are supporting their actions in the brutalization and incarceration of our community. And I want to put a stop to that. So please, in the next round of budget proposals, please consider divesting from the police department and defunding the police department so we can have a better, safer community that's not controlled by fear and terror.
Thank you, Ainsley. Paula, next.
I have Todd Brinkley.
Welcome, Todd.
Hi, thanks for having me. I, I wanted to thank all of the city employees for their conscientious efforts in serving our community. And I also would like to thank you, Mayor Peterson, and the rest of the council members for your dedicated service. I know that it takes an inordinate amount of time to do your jobs. And as a member of the community, I sincerely appreciate that dedication and, and time you spend for us. I want to make a special shout out to Chief Russo and his department. I've lived in Cottonwood Heights for the majority of the last 28 years. I'm a property owner here. I formerly served on the holiday Cottonwood Community Council with Doug Peterson's father and worked on organization of forming Cottonwood Heights. And I'm proud of what Cottonwood Heights has become. But the reason I'm, I'm making a shout out for Chief Russo and his department is because I think they do such an outstanding job with our community. The former, or the last person who spoke, I, I was a little surprised. I, I don't want to criticize her anyway. If, if she's had a bad experience, I'm sorry. But it feels like I live in a completely different community from what she lives in. My experience with the Cottonwood Heights Police is they couldn't be better at service to the community and have better customer service. I've had occasion over my 28 years of living here to interact with many officers on the Cottonwood Heights Police Department. All of them have exemplified professionalism, restraint, courtesy, respect of the citizens. And it's a, it's a great community. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Appreciate your comments. Paula, who's next?
Mayor, I don't have anyone else.
Okay, we'll wait 30 seconds.
I have Robert Arbert.
Welcome, Robert. Oh, no, Cassie.
Robert left, so let me give Cassie a...
All right, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Cassie.
Hello, my name is Cassie Hoffmeister. I have lived in Cottonwood Heights for about three years now. Um, I know that there's a lot of negative attitudes, as we just heard from someone a moment ago regarding our police, and they persist in our community. So I wanted to take a moment to thank Cottonwood Heights PD. On two separate occasions, I have had to deal with my vehicle being broken into. On each occasion, Cottonwood Heights PD have been nothing but professional, kind, informative, and supportive. In a separate instance, my husband left for work early one morning to find a man looking into hours in a neighbor's vehicle. My husband called the police and they arrived very quickly. I'm incredibly grateful to have such responsive officers that I can count on. Finally, perhaps a year ago, I was having an ongoing issue with an inmate in California prison system contacting me via, via social media. One day I had enough and sought the assistance of Cottonwood Heights PD. I forgot the name of the officer who spoke with me, but he showed me into a room where we could speak about what was going on privately. He was very kind, reassuring, and lighthearted, which made me more comfortable discussing the problem. No need for a psychology degree here. He was just that kind. This has been something I am very self-conscious about, and I'm very nervous, and I felt very nervous coming forward with it. But this officer was amazing, and I'm so grateful for that positive experience. I am not sure what this officer did, but I no longer have any issues with that inmate contacting me. Because of this experience, I feel very comfortable approaching my law enforcement and if, especially if there was an issue going forward. In conclusion, I would like to say that I've had several positive interactions with our police. I value their presence. I am very frustrated with how they have been smeared in our community, especially when it comes from Cottonwood Heights leadership. We need leaders in Cottonwood Heights that work together, collaborate, problem solve, and not people who actively cause division in our community. Thank you so much to our officers. I very much appreciate your support and your work, and I know that others are too. And to the person who just commented on divesting our officers, that's very fortunate for her that she and her family for decades have lived in such a prosperous and safe community. But as from someone being from Southern California who didn't have the opportunity or the privilege to live in such a safeguarded community, I very much am grateful for the protection that our police officers give us. And they don't instill me with fear. They instill me with safety. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cassie. Appreciate your, your comments. Paula, do we have someone else?
Terry Glad.
Go ahead, Terry.
I am Terry Glad. I've lived here in this community since 1955. With the exception of two years that I got married and moved away for a short time. I am from a family of law enforcement officers. I don't believe that the general public understands what these officers deal with. I see, I saw my husband go out many days when I didn't know if he'd return or not. The minute they put that uniform on, they're a target to the world. I supported the Chief Russo and his officers wholeheartedly. I have seen them in action. I have been present when they have made calls. And I appreciate the work that they have done. I do hope that the City Council can support them and work with them. I'm sure there are things that can be changed in everyone's life. And so as the, as the police department moves forward, I'm sure they will do what is right under Chief Russo's guidance. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. I appreciate your comments. Paula, who's next?
I have Robert Arbert.
Welcome, Robert. Robert, you're muted. Robert, can you unmute your computer?
Thank you.
There you go.
Made it. We have had a number of interactions with the officers and with the police department in the Cottonwood Heights over 40-year period. And we're just very grateful to live here. We happen to be Cub Scout leaders at one point and brought all of our Cub Scouts over to the police department. And they were given extremely good tours, taught them all sorts of things. We're happy to report that none of them were arrested. And so we, we, we have just very fond feelings of everything that goes on over there. All of our interactions have been positive, and we look forward to many more interactions on that same level. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Robert. Appreciate you sharing your thoughts. Paula, who's next?
I don't have anyone else.
Okay, we'll wait 30 seconds. See if someone gets brave, and then we'll move on. Okay, with no additional, no additional public comments. Sorry about that. No additional public comments. So we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is the staff report. And we get to hear from our, our administrative fiscal services director, Scott Juergens. So Scott, we'll turn it over to you.
Okay, I'm just gonna share my screen here. So some of these items were shared last week as we did a financial update on some of the hot button items. This is one of those screens, our sales tax trend. So we've received our sales tax through July. We're about two months behind in terms of actual receipt. We should actually later this week receive our August sales tax, but we haven't received that quite yet. At this point in time, we're 66,000 ahead of our 2020 sales tax collections. 2020, we received 6,719,000 of net sales taxes. Our budget this year is 5,750,000. And this kind of goes along with the recommendation that we talked about in the business meeting to potentially look at increasing the budget on this more along the lines with what we received last year in our sales taxes. The, this is the second sales tax-related item. That's the county option highway transportation sales tax. We've received 53,000 as of July. That puts us about 8,000 ahead of 2020 and about in line with what we have budgeted so far at this early stage. This is our municipal energy tax. So we have received taxes through August as of this point in time. The amount that we've received currently is 366,000 to year-to-date. That's about 22,000 ahead of 2020. Our budget is 1,950,000. And at this point in time, I don't see a big need to change things. The collections on this can fluctuate month to month as different providers submit their returns back to the state. This is our cable franchise tax trend. So we haven't yet received any funds on this. This, this is collected quarterly. Typically, we receive this in November for our first collection. So we're still about a month out on receiving our first indication. But our, our budget is down just a teeny bit from collections last year. The trend has been slight reductions in each year in the past. Excuse me. The Class C roads. So we've received for four periods, we're, we're, we're distributed for this in two-month increments. And we've received for four periods for the, so far. For those four periods, we've received 390,000. That's about 27,000 behind last year where we were. We have a decrease budgeted in our, in our budget this year from what we received last year. Last year was a bit of a surprise that it came in as much as it did. The trend had been slightly reducing amounts in the past. And so that's what we had budgeted, and we'll keep an eye on this. But we think we're pretty close in line to where this is gonna land as it goes through the year. This is our general fund expense trend. As we look in years past, timing of different payments can affect how this expense goes. At this point in time of the year, we are at 28% spent. We do have a few expenditures that come in at the first part of the year. Every year, I would say this is pretty normal in terms of our spending. We're about 39,000 ahead of our last year's expenditures. But that's very close to where I would expect that we would be, even though we're 28% spent at 25% of the year. That doesn't give me any concern at this point in time. Everybody's about where we expect them to be spent at this point in time of the year. And we're, we're moving along in a good way there. This goes along with the, the September financial statements that Dave prepares and sent out, and Tim sent that out last Friday with the council communications. But this just graphically shows some of that information that's already included in that report. And so that is available there, or it's also posted on our city website. And if you need a copy of that email to you, I can do that. But that's, that's the extent of what I have. I don't know if anyone has any questions that I could answer.
Well, just one question, Scott. When you talk about 28%, but in previous charts, we show that we average about $600,000 underspent per year. Does that mean that as a year moves on, we become more conservative or?
No, what happens is, is our liability insurance payments is one that I'll throw out there. We have to pay that premium in July for the full year. We prepay our fire costs at the beginning of the quarter for each quarter that's going on. And so that's another one that comes up. There are a handful of Um, and so that's another one that comes up. There are a handful of other expenditures, uh, that we get hit for upfront in the, in terms of cost. And then, um, so if you were to look at it, it would kind of look like a little bit like a dish. We have some expenditures that are front-loaded at the beginning of the year, and then we have some expenditures that kind of catch us a little bit at the end of the year. But I would say that, um, if you look at this as it compares to the prior year, at this same point in time, it's very, very close. Um, and, and our net budget is about the same. I'm not, you know, thirty-nine thousand dollars on a twenty million dollar budget, nearly seventeen million dollars is, is really nothing to speak of from a percentage standpoint. I'm not worked concerned about the trajectory of where, trajectory of where we're going. The other thing is, is that this also includes that hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of expenditures related to COVID. That once we get that money book programmed back through, through a budget adjustment, that will alleviate some of this as well.
Why just applaud the efforts of, of Tim and you and the staff for your, um, control of spending because that's, it's always impressive to have that underspent each year. Yeah.
Well, we keep getting much better news than we possibly expected on sales tax and that's, that's thanks to everyone who is out there still generating sales tax, buying things and living. So, uh, it's, it's very, very good news. We thought we might be in a much worse position. So thanks. Did Scott freeze up?
No, I just, that's all I have. That's, that's the, that's it. Sorry.
I'd like if you'd go on another thirty minutes.
Oh, well, I could go on, but I figure you got other things you'd rather do than, uh, hear me drone on.
Go get some rest and relax.
Uh, in this case, you're very much right, Scott. We'll, 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 we'll succeed to that opinion rather than the mayor.
Yeah. Um, any, any questions of Scott regarding that report? Again, um, we appreciate Scott's effort and, uh, the great information we're getting helps us, uh, make the decisions we have to make when we have good information. Hearing none, Scott, thank you again. Uh, let's move on to action items. We have several uh, for us to consider. The first item of action is adopting the Bonneville Shoreline Trail Access Master Plan element of the general plan. I know something we've worked on off and on for the last couple of months and, uh, we've made some minor tweaks just in, in recent weeks. So Mike Johnson, you wanna introduce that quickly?
Yeah, just a reminder for those listening, a quick overview. This is a, a master plan that, um, looks at the, uh, the potential Bonneville Shoreline Trail alignment through the city and makes recommendations for once that trail is in, how, how can people access it? And it defines access in a few different ways, from, uh, regional access, which would have, uh, parking amenities, restrooms, you know, larger capacity trail, uh, trailhead points to, uh, secondary, which is kind of a, of still parking facilities, but fewer amenities to local access points, which are meant for neighborhood foot traffic, um, only very few or, or no improvements. But still legal access to that future trail alignment. So this master plan was focused on access, where it should be and what it should look like. Um, the, the plan was presented, at least the draft of the plan was presented in public open houses back in February of twenty-twenty. Over the spring and summer and, and into the fall now, it's been considered by the Parks, Trails and Open Space Committee, uh, the Planning Commission and now the City Council. Uh, the Parks, Trails and Open Space Committee, um, not quite unanimously, but very close recommended approval to the City Council of this master plan. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval as well. Uh, they made a few recommendations which the council has considered. Um, some have been implemented and some have been modified at the council's direction. Um, the, the most recent draft of the plan was, um, published on the city's website and distributed to the mayor and council about a month ago. So, uh, no changes since then. We feel like the plan's been through a very thorough public process and it, it really represents a, a good approach to trail access points with the caveat that it is just a master plan. All the points shown on the plan don't have to come to fruition, but it gives us something to, to start with. And gives us a plan to use to start working to implement the trail and, and getting people legal access to that trail.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, any, any questions? I know we've been through this a few times, but any final comments, questions? I, I'm excited for not just the, uh, access points, but the whole trail system and the connectivity in our community. And especially during these crazy times with more people outdoors. So more trails, the better. Any comments, questions?
I would echo that, Mayor. Hats off to council and staff for making great strides in, in trails.
Thank you. All right, entertain a motion to, uh, adopt ordinance three forty-six.
I'll move that we adopt ordinance three forty-six.
It's been moved by Councilmember Michael to have a second.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Bruce. Any further discussion or comments? Then I'll call for the vote. Uh, Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. The next item is ordinance three forty-seven, amending code chapter nine point six-two concerning idling vehicles. It's an ordinance we passed, uh, God, has it been two years ago? I can't remember how long ago. Um, anyway, Tim, do you want to introduce this?
Yeah, it's, uh, this is a change modified, uh, two modifications to the chapter. And it's based on state legislature, uh, adopted items, I mean, this past legislature. One is that there, instead of three warnings, there'd be one warning. And then the other is, there's an exception to, um, on private properties for, uh, businesses that have drive-through service, provided that they, um, post a sign stating what the city's um, code standards are on this. And so these are legislative, uh, changes that were made at the state legislature. And we're reflecting that in our ordinance and we're recommending approval.
Any questions or comments to staff regarding the, uh, revised ordinance? Hearing that, I'd entertain a motion to, uh, approve ordinance number three four seven.
Move that we approve ordinance three forty-seven.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bracken. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Seconded by Councilmember Peterson. Any further discussion, comments? Then I'll call for the vote. Uh, Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. The next item is resolution twenty twenty dash forty-nine, accepting a bid and approving a construction contract for the twenty-twenty citywide asphalt crack seal project. Uh, this contract's for about two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars with M and M Asphalt Services. Now, Matt, you wanna introduce that for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is, uh, this went through the public bidding process. M and M was the low bidder. This project is part of the five-year road maintenance plan. This is year three that we're doing this. And this is the first phase of that where we crack seal and prepare the roads for the spring when we come in and put the seals on top of those roads.
Thank you, Matt. It's, it's been, uh, a good service and seen, received a lot of positive comments for the last couple of years. We've, we've implemented that five-year plan. Any, uh, comments or questions about regarding this, uh, uh, resolution? Hearing that, I'd call for, uh, approval of resolution, uh, twenty twenty dash forty-nine.
I move that we approve resolution twenty twenty dash forty-nine.
It's moved by Councilmember Bruce. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Bracken. Any further comments or questions? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. Uh, Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
Thank you.
The next item is resolution twenty twenty dash fifty, approving an interlocal agreement with UDOT for corridor preservation and control along Wasatch Boulevard. Mike Johnson, you wanna introduce that for our audience?
Yes, thank you. This was discussed with the council back in early spring, March or April, I believe. Um, this is a proposed cooperative agreement between the city and UDOT, uh, known as a corridor agreement. Um, that would, uh, apply to Wasatch Boulevard, at least the state-owned portion of it. Um, as I mentioned in the work session, this agreement doesn't, i- it's, it's not related to the EIS or the, some of the things we're working on and recommending in the Wasatch Master Plan, including um, the, the future of that road with capacity and speed limits and, and things like that, that will be covered by the EIS. So we'll continue our work there. This agreement, uh, i- is kind of, uh, a tangent to that, that deals mainly with, um, access management, intersection spacing, potential locations of future signals and intersections and, and those kinds of details. Um, so it, it, it acts as a, a document that kind of reaffirms a, a working partnership between UDOT and the city. Uh, a lot of the, the intersection locations and spacing and all the requirements listed in this document are already in Utah or UDOT's, um, their, their development code. So there are things that would apply regardless. This just makes them known to the city. Uh, conversely, the, the document references local master plans, which would be the Wasatch Boulevard Master Plan that UDOT should try to implement as much as possible as well. Um, so it's a kind of a, an agreement that, that gives an understanding to both parties as we work with, um, future plans in the area. Um, future development applications and, and things like that. Uh, one of the, the primary changes that has been made at the recommendation of the council is a, a provision to um, mitigate noise as much as possible with any future work. Um, so that is added by reference now. There's a map showing those existing and potential intersection locations. And to the mayor's note in the work session, there's one small typo that we will correct, um, before we forward this back to UDOT.
Thank you, Mike. I think it emphasizes the importance of communication between, uh, UDOT and the city, which I think is critical. So I'm, uh, I applaud the efforts to have this and plus it'll be reviewed every couple of years. So any further comments, suggestions? Concerns from the council? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion of resolution twenty twenty dash fifty.
Sorry, Christine, you can. You can go if you, if you'd like. Should I do it? I, I move that we approve resolution twenty twenty dash fifty.
It's been moved by Councilmember Peterson. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, please.
It's been seconded by Councilmember Michael. Any further questions or comments? Here, I'll call for the vote. Uh, Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilor Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay, we have one more, uh, action item for the consent calendar. And that's resolution twenty twenty dash fifty-one consenting to an appointment to the Planning Commission of Jessa- Jessica Chapel from District Two. Uh, Mike, you wanna go with that first or Tim can join in or whatever?
I, I'll address that. Um, where I'm recommending that she be part of the Planning Commission. Uh, Jessica has a great background, as Mike had indicated in the, uh, work session. She has a bachelor's in civil engineering. She has background in structural engineering. She's a consultant. She also has worked on the Utah Seismic Safety Commission. And I think she brings, uh, some great, uh, knowledge to the Planning Commission and I think she'll be a great asset. She was also recommended by Chairperson Chris Coates as well. And so that is our recommendation tonight for you to consider this. And we're excited to have her on board if the council will approve that.
Thank you. Sounds like a great fit. Um, any comments, questions?
That appointment's immediate as of the signing of the resolution. Is that correct? Correct. She'd be involved in the next meeting.
Um, we have one tomorrow. She'll, she'll join in November.
Hey, thanks for the clarification. I'd move that we approve resolution twenty twenty dash fifty-one.
I would second that and just say that we're, uh, I've heard tremendous things about Jessica and I'm really excited for her addition. We're lucky to have her.
All right, thank you. It's been, uh, moved by Councilmember Bracken, the second by Councilmember Bruce. Any further comments? Terrific. I'll call for the vote. Uh, Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilor Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. The additional item of business is our consent calendar. Uh, we need, uh, to approve our work session and business meeting minutes for October sixth, twenty twenty. We have a motion for that approval, please.
I move that we approve the minutes.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bruce. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
The seconded by Councilmember Peterson. For the comments, I'll call for the vote. Uh, Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
And I'll abstain since I was not present on the sixth. All right, thank you, everyone. Just a reminder, uh, before we adjourn, that we're meeting a week from tonight at five o'clock. And Tim, if I understand it, you'll be sending out a email tomorrow.
Yes, I'll be sending out a, um, memo to the council, um, on those questions related to, uh, the police policies and procedures. And then, uh, we will also be placing on the agenda from what I've heard, unless I didn't hear correctly. Also on that meeting, a discussion on compensation. Is that correct? Did I hear that right?
I didn't understand it would be an agenda item. I just understood that we expected discussion to come up that would impact that discussion.
Okay.
Because we're talking about police, so if it's on.
I'm glad I clarified.
Yeah.
Glad I clarified that, man.
Yep, yep. Okay, and, uh, a- again, the agenda for next week is a result of my request. Several weeks ago for people to submit their priorities for discussions. We took those, we summarized them. It's a, I think it's, I think it's an excellent list. And, uh, you know, Tim and staff have been working on it to facilitate it. So I think it'll be a productive meeting and appreciate, uh, Robbie and, uh, his office of supporting Tim and others in, uh, creating some responses that we can look at as we meet next week. So it'll be at five o'clock and it'll be a Zoom meeting, I, I assume. Uh, any other comments, questions before we adjourn? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn from tonight's meeting.
I move that we adjourn.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bruce. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Seconded by Councilmember Peterson. All in favor, say aye.
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 If I'm unopposed. Hearing none, for the record, it's unanimous. Uh, Riley, welcome back and, uh, we'll see everyone. Talk to everyone through the coming week. Thank you. We're adjourned.
Thank you.